Good morning, welcome to the Board of Education's work session.
Good afternoon.
During this meeting, we ask that you turn off -- oh, no, it's not me, I'm sorry.
Good morning, welcome to the Board of Education work session. This is a public meeting that is being videotaped for Queen Anne's County citizens to review on QACTV-7, a local cable station. The agenda is available on the information table. During this meeting, we ask that you turn off your cellphones and hold personal conversations outside of the meeting room. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, I need a motion to accept the approval of the agenda.
It's a move.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. During this work session, we will be reviewing and editing our board handbook. Do we want to turn this over to Darren at this time? Or how do we want to do this, Darren? Are we going to do this page by page?
My recommendation, and we talked about it, I think, in previous meeting or meetings, including, gosh, several months ago, is you were seeking to resume your momentum on this project that I think dates back to last year. I think the best approach for the board, since you're not going to create a wholesale brand-new document, but in fact make changes, each individual board member may have their own preferences, what does or doesn't need to be changed. I think whoever's chairing the meeting is best perhaps to go through section by section, so in order of the document, but entertain motions for changes from fellow board members. And then if any motion for a revision at least earns a second, you're then open the floor to discussion of those changes. They could in turn be opportunities for legal advice, they could be staff advice, you know. And my approach, since this is a public meeting, is if there's legal advice that perhaps relates directly to litigation, or some sort of personnel or other confidential matter, I'll advise you that this might not be the setting to provide the advice. But I don't anticipate that with this sort of document. You know, and so I'm taking notes, perhaps backing Jackie on this, and to the extent you all are making changes, I'm monitoring and I'm advising when needed.
Okay. So I guess if we're going to go page by page, we need to know that we need to -- the first page is quite obviously.
Well, cover.
The whole cover.
Cover is the very first.
Whole cover later needs to be done again.
And always the date at the top on every page, whatever date we revise.
Okay, the second page also.
Yep.
I'm thinking as of now, three through eight, nine, 10. Okay, so three through 11 is basically the book, so.
Yours is a little different than mine, I think you needed to print out, because see, you have, your page 12 is not my page 12, is it?
I wondered about that, because I wasn't sure either.
You have 13.
It is.
Then you should, so you're going from here.
Right, am I wrong?
To the history. I don't think we need to change to short history of public.
No, I wasn't going to. See, that was my page 12.
I don't have any changes till page 16.
Do I need a book?
I think you mean to the appendix, so the table conducts through the appendix. I would use this and try to go off and back.
All right.
I don't have any changes till page 16, so I don't know how far you want to go.
Well, I think what we need to do is go to the authority and responsibilities of the Board of Education.
Okay, that sounds good.
We had talked about reviewing that anyway, since we have new board member. Darren, I believe we were going to talk about the responsibilities and roles of the board.
Yes, and I'm trying not to backtrack too much as we go along. The only thing I will suggest to you is, for pages like page nine, which is an appendix listing statutes and authorities, you can assume that at such time makes sense as we circulate your next version. To the extent I need to catch up the law with the references here, I'll do that. I mean, we just had, some of the code books were just published, and some are still not yet published, on the July and October effective statutes. So we'll make sure this is all caught up. That's kind of one of those things you do towards the end, just like you're going to probably end up with a, well, you will end up with a 2018 date, not a 2015, 16, or 17 date.
Right, exactly.
So I will be watching out for those, I just want you to know. If you don't want to do every citation as we go through here, we'll get that right.
Okay.
So in terms of getting back to where you are about authorities and responsibilities, we did talk before about, you know, briefly touching on those as we have, as you all have a new board member. I will say that, for the most part, year by year, you don't see changes in the authorities and responsibilities statutes, and to a lesser extent regulations. You know, local or county Board of Education responsibilities have been set down for a long time now. Obviously, the State Board opinions fleshed that out a little bit. For the most part, I think there are some tried and true touchpoints that I'd share with you. I think one of the things to keep in mind, some of you may remember this from the first time I sat with you in a closed session when we were talking about an appeal case, keep in mind that you are individual board members, and the statute recognizes it's such, and you in this particular board are hereby either an election or appointment in certain circumstances. But really, your legal operation on behalf of the school system comes as a body. In fact, there's a statute 4-101, 4-101 of the education article, that even talks about that you're a body corporate and politic. And I come back to that a lot with boards, when it's all said and done, because I remind them that like a corporation, under state law in Maryland, there's a whole set of statutes for corporations, you exist to perform your duties and your statutory mission as a group. And so when you meet either in an open or closed session, you're meeting as a body. When you take action by vote, or sometimes by review and consent, however it is, your staff brings an item forward, or that you bring forward by motion, you are approving it, or not approving that item, as a group. You have individual votes, they're calculated, certainly Jackie will track votes on things. But once the vote's done, there are no individual votes per se as relates to the action. That's now in the past. The action is an action of the board. And that segues to one of the other touchpoints I like to mention is, whatever goes into making a decision, and certainly there can be disagreement over issues, not every vote is unanimous, not, sometimes a five-nothing vote still reflects five very different opinions and motivations. Whatever you say out in public, whatever that is, I encourage you to respect each other, you are representing your constituents, you're representing the school system, and it's presumed that you are doing, per the statute, what your job is as a board member. Once a decision is made, however, keep in mind that if it's an appealable item, you should refrain from commenting on what may have gone into that decision or that vote, because at that point, the vote's done. And so if an act is taken, for instance, that's subject to appeal to the State Board, my strong recommendation of boards is, don't go backwards in time, don't have discussions, certainly in public, or in something that's going to be considered a public meeting, about what happened and why in a case or an action you took. Because at this point, it's now going to the next level. And at this next level, the State Board level, for instance, or to a court, they're only looking at, was it approved or not approved? Okay? And there is a whole area of law which is worth you knowing, and applies to you, county councils, municipal town councils. You are protected by very strong immunities, because you're exercising your duties as officers of a state-created body. In addition, your reasons or motivations are not, for your individual votes, are not really subject to discovery, as they call it, or for folks to force you to disclose. Other than what you say in public, in your commentary, and what's captured in minutes, your reasons for voting are what's on the record. And that's often why you would not see, let's say there's a 3-2 vote on something contentious, whatever it might be. You know, once it's done, it's done. And no one has a right to force any board member, yea or nay, to say, other than what's in the record, tell us your reason for your vote. Imagine that in a county council setting, you know, on a number of issues, or in, you know, a commission voting on something. So it's, again, it gets back to, it really is because your individual board member action isn't really the legal action of the board. It's the board's action. Another touchpoint is, when you do have your closed sessions, and we know there's 14 reasons for which you can generally go into a closed session, most of them make sense on their face. I mean, there are specific personnel cases, specific student cases, legal issues, court cases, where you're receiving legal advice. In those situations, negotiations is another one, right? And you're trying to enter into contract with your various unions. Remember that what you all talk about in those sessions, okay, is confidential by statute, allowed by the Public Information Act, to be held in a closed session. You're strongly advised not to then leave those sessions and talk about those deliberations, or your fellow board members' comments, to others, because then what you've done is, in essence, you're risking waiver of what was an important statutory protection in the first place, is that you could have a closed deliberation. And there's cases and opinions out there in various venues and forums that talk about what happens when that protection of confidential deliberations is breached. There are opinions out there from various ethics panels about when boards haven't been happy with their own, because, I can think of two on the other side of the bridge, where ethics complaints were brought, because folks disclosed, in negotiations, I think one, and another was a very serious appeal case, actually disclosed to parties involved what was discussed in the closed session. And you just can't, you can't do that. And I gotta say, you can't do that. I mean, I advise you not to do that, obviously, you're creatures of free will. But, again, this gets back to what you're acting as. When you're in that closed session, just as in the open session, you're acting as a body of the whole. You're acting together in some direction, even if the "together" isn't necessarily in agreement. You are acting together on behalf of the school system. Beyond that, I think that the best advice I can give, and I think, Carrie, you have experience in other bodies and commissions and things like that, so I don't think this is news to you, is occasionally go back to everything, from the handbook to the law, to your touchpoints of why you're doing this, how you're doing this, what put you in this position, and just read it sometimes. It's kind of good to go back and read the source material. I think of the first part of education article 4-101 through, well, it's probably 4-101 through probably the 4-200s, where it talks about both the Board of Education and the superintendent's duties and responsibilities. I strongly recommend to all board members, go back and read those. Some, from time to time, they change, but I mean, go back and read what's in the books now. You all, I hope, have the one MABE-published set of statutes and regulations, and then also there's a school law handbook.
That's what we're getting now. We never had that.
Good, well, I.
We have the annotated code book, and it's just too difficult.
Yeah, we had it before.
Sometimes there's not one for every board member, but wherever you can find those source materials, I encourage you to read them, because A, they remind you of some of the things we're talking about here, but B, I think they'll remind you of what a really important job you do, and are to be commended for doing, and that it's serious, people should respect you for it, and there are ways you can perform the job that will encourage that respect. And I think all of that goes towards your mission. So I don't want to get into too much detail on individual scenarios, because that's better sometimes when we're doing legal advice on cases. One thing I think this board has agreed to over time when it comes to legal advice is, and my door's always open, my phone's always there, and if you want to call about a particular issue that you as a board are dealing with, I don't have a problem with that. But the general way boards operate is, when there is a matter on which you are seeking advice, legal advice, for the board, you should talk to your officers first, because ultimately, A, it can cost money, I mean, depending on how much you use your attorneys, it does ultimately become a cost issue. But also beyond that is, I think you want to, you have officers for a reason. They're your interaction points with the superintendent often, they're your interaction points with the public, and I think there's nothing wrong with them being your sort of first point of interaction with legal counsel. Because sometimes it could be an issue that was addressed four months before you got here, and it won't be that new, and you can talk about it, and maybe together look for where the real issue is, and then give me a buzz. And just remember, whether you're talking to me or anybody else, because you're a body of five, if three of you are together conducting board business, you were holding a meeting, and therefore should have worked with Jackie and others ahead of time to set that meeting up and provide the proper notice. But where, that's less of an obvious situation, where you have to also be cautious, is if three or more members of a five-member body are exchanging emails on board-related business, there's body of law out there that suggests you are having a meeting. You know, and just because it might be president to vice president, vice president to somebody else, and then it sort of works its way around, I mean, you could see how that could be abused. And so again, we advise against, you know, having informal meetings electronically or other ways, because as we know from open meetings complaints, there are folks that think it's important to watch this, and hats off to them, and they will look for each example when they can. Sharon and I have talked about this before, you know, there are folks who this is sort of what they do, they look to see if you are doing your job, and I think you all are more than capable of doing it in conformance with the law, and I hope I can support that. I'm sorry for the long-winded answer, but I know we wanted to talk about some of these things.
That's all right.
And you have, Darren, I want to thank you for always being available to us, no matter how nitpicky our questions are. I really appreciate that, because I am not an attorney, but I read this handbook every time something comes up, and I learn something new every time I do it.
Good point.
Appreciate it.
My job.
So did anyone have any questions about that first part there?
We're on, your pages 12 and 13?
Authority and responsibilities of the board.
Okay.
Policy development.
You, as a board, just so you know, you should have a policy, and I believe you do, about policy development. Most models out there not only talk about how you would, I mean, how you would adopt a policy, you know, it's generally by either the superintendent recommending it, and brought forward as a presentation and a recommendation, or sometimes it's done from the floor because of an issue that's come up. But one thing that's important to remember, if it's not in a policy, is often there will be a mechanism for policy to be overridden, and that's not something to be used often, but sometimes when some urgent issue comes up, for instance, a policy might say there'll be three readings before adoption. There may be a time where you want to dispense with three readings because something's urgent. The key there is, if your policy addresses it, just follow the policy for how it is you suspend a policy. If, some places make it unanimous, you know, you have to have unanimous of all people in the quorum to suspend a policy like that.
I believe that Mark was working on a policy for policies?
I do want to add on behalf of the superintendent that Mr. Farley is working on a revised, it's going to be policy development that will override the policy on policy. The superintendent's been very adamant about, as well as the board, about that process. That will be coming before you at the January 10th board meeting. So one of the things I'll take back to the superintendent is making sure that's in alignment with what is presented here.
And I think I can piggyback on it and say, I think this is correct, because at least you and Ms. Wright and others are involved in it. I believe there's an ongoing effort to, to sort of consolidate, if that's the right word, and simplify, again, I hope that's the right word, your website access point or points for the public and you, all of us.
Absolutely.
So that it is not necessarily 15 different places you might access policy and cross your fingers that it's all the same sets, but it's really behind the scenes, all getting the user to one place, which is a one set of policies, not policies in draft, not policies that are almost done, but literally the current board policies and regulations. And that is the practice you should have.
Yes.
I think we all agree on that.
And I think that that works in progress right now.
And a new Dr. Kane's, I mean, a clear numbering system, so that it's easy to navigate and find for all of our staff.
A lot of systems, you all know this from MABE work, a lot of systems have gone to lettering. I think it started by your sisters and brothers in Montgomery County, who probably from some best practice they read, went away from 1, 1A, 1B, or 200, 201, to this, you know, JA-RA. And it was kind of, almost like when we lost, this is showing my age, we lost, what, the Dewey Decimal System?
The Decimal System.
And went to the Library of Congress, and my head started spinning, because I kind of liked the basic numbers. I mean, there is that change.
Right.
But I believe there were good reasons for it, because it allows expansion and contraction within without constantly renumbering everything, that's one of the reasons. And again, that's all standard stuff, MABE can guide on that, that's below maybe the surface of what you're doing here, but I think the fact that the superintendent and Ms. Paluski and others are focused on this is a huge benefit to the school system.
I think we agree on that. Did anyone have any questions on that? Okay, so we'll move on over to rules of order, norms and procedures.
I have a question on this one.
This is 16, or 15.
15. It's on the quorum in the votes, if, the way I've read this, and I don't, if you hold a meeting when you have at least three, and understand that, but if you're going to make a decision, all three have to agree on that, is that what we're saying? You have to be three to zero on all those votes, in a situation where you only have three people there? And I guess that's because it would be the majority if you had all five there.
Yes.
But is that required when you have only three there? Or do you need a majority only? Is there some rule about that?
I don't want, I don't want, I want you all to be able to have that discussion, but since you're asking me the question, as it's currently written, this suggests that no matter what number is there, three, four, or five, you'd have to have three votes at a minimum. And I don't know if that's.
To show a majority.
To show a majority. So that, yes.
Is that a law or statute?
No, that's just the way this is written.
Okay.
You certainly could have, you could have a quorum.
Say three.
You could have a quorum of three, and have a two-to-one vote for something. The only place that doesn't work is when a statute specifically indicates, for instance, or a policy that you have somewhere else, that a, we'll call it a student appeal, that a student appeal decision by the superintendent cannot be overturned absent at least, in this case, three votes. If you have that, that's, then that's going to supersede anything. But if you don't want that, and don't have any of the specifics, and simply want to be able to do work as a quorum, you would need to change that. But there's something to be said for, when there's less of you here, that more of an affirmative vote it should occur? I mean, again, that's, I don't assume the language is here that people weren't thinking. I assume the thinking behind this was, when there's less of you here, let's be sure that everyone's in agreement, to use layman's terms. But that may or may not be what you want.
But we may not have that either. We may not have that agreement.
Right, which means you may not be able, you may not take action on that item.
Right.
Right.
Now, not to go way ahead, but amending the handbook is completely against that thinking, because it requires four affirmative votes.
You mean in the handbook's terms, yes?
As it stands right now.
Correct.
So that's something I.
Which would mean, which would mean the handbook couldn't be amended by a mere, a mere, a simple quorum.
A quorum, yikes.
And again, I don't assume that's necessarily bad practice, maybe it shouldn't. I mean, this, this isn't an LLC where there's, you know, someone with 99% ownership who controls the whole thing.
Well, that's what I was just getting ready to say.
It's not going to be an emergency decision, amending the handbook.
As a board of five people, then the quorum still needs to stay the way it is, which, like you said, four to one, and.
For an amendment.
For an amendment.
Would pass the amendment.
Right.
But three-zero would not.
No, no.
If we only had.
Or three-two.
Right.
Three-two, three-one, two-one.
Not as it's written now.
None of that would. We would almost always have to have four present to even carry a motion for a vote for an amendment.
Of your handbook.
Of our handbook. The way it's written now.
That's correct.
Okay. And I don't mean to jump ahead, but that does play into this.
That's a good thing to point out here.
That's the only thing that is different from the quorum of three.
Oh, okay, okay.
And for those who do legislative history analysis, if you think about it, that kind of thing appearing in the same document with this suggests that folks knew exactly what they were doing when they made, it wasn't a cavalier thing, it was, let's have three out of three when we have a small number, so that things aren't just sort of steamrolled through.
You know what my thinking for that is? So we are all clear about the rules that bind us, according to this handbook. We wouldn't want anyone to be at a disadvantage in a situation where they weren't in session with us, and all of a sudden, there's a change they missed.
A vote came up.
Or didn't clearly understand, and now we have an issue.
Right.
That's what I think that's written for.
Yeah, yeah.
That protects us all, and ensures that we all notify one another, hey, by the way, you weren't there Friday, but there's a change on the table, and it's.
Right. I agree with that.
Something we need to discuss, yeah, yeah. Keeps everybody on the same page.
To keep your order, Beverly, did you have?
I just, I just.
A proposed change? I'm just curious, I mean.
I don't, I just wanted to know if three people do show, I've seen this in the past, not with these, this group, where three people agreed they would show up so they could pass something. And so they drug themselves in there to pass something, and they passed it. But it was three, it was required three, and I was like the fourth on the backside, or whatever. So I think, I mean, I understand the purpose in that, so that it is always going to be a majority of the board, no matter who shows up to a meeting.
Right, it just made me that less can get done sometimes when there's less board members there. I think that's, I think you're hit right on what it is. And I think the language is clear enough in that regard, but it doesn't.
I guess I don't have a problem with it, because, because as you're saying, we're supposed to be a board, and when a decision comes out, it would like to think that not two people out of five made that decision.
Well, because there was only three there.
And this forces a majority.
Now, but keep in mind, you have some limitations because of this. That, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, I'm just saying you do. Could there be a situation where more rote tasks, let's say it's a tough weather night, and you have three members here, and you're having a normal meeting, public's all here. One of the first things you do every time is set an agenda, another one's to adopt minutes, right? I mean, theoretically, you could have a situation where there's disagreement on the agenda, and someone wants to change it. Well, again, this is going to say, unless all three of you who happen to be able to make it to that meeting are okay with that, then you're not changing it.
But I'm okay with that, because basically even if all five of you are there, and three vote for that change, it's going to happen anyway. So three is what's needed, whether there's three or five people here, so.
Just letting you know, there could be some things that don't get accomplished at a meeting with only three people.
Well, I guess my feeling is that I wouldn't want to think that something were to happen at home for any of us as an emergency, and just say two of us, what a freakish thing, but two of us, something happens, and there's something that's only agenda to be voted on. I wouldn't want to think that, you know, that that's the way.
Your emergency at home has to suffer because we have to do this.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So that's, that's my opinion of it anyhow.
And I think, I think it's perfectly acceptable to poll your group outside of session as to whether we will have a quorum vote when we appear. I know many times the commissioners vote on something with only three people there. I have never seen them vote three to two, I mean, two to one. When they are caught in a vote of three, because two are absent.
Right, right.
There have been times they've been called away from a meeting on an emergency, two of them had to leave, they still carry out their vote. Each time I've seen that happen, it's been a vote of three, zero. So perhaps if there was a disagreement, and you knew that, that's something you don't take into the public realm.
Exactly, exactly.
Yet, yet, either until you have.
We have always had discussions, too, that we don't make, I know emergencies happen, but we always had discussed in the past that we don't vote on things during work sessions or other meetings except for the monthly meeting. Now, I know that emergencies do happen, and you have to account for that, but that was pretty much a standard that we've been living by.
Yeah, it was just a greed-upon standard, wasn't it, like in the book here?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
My question, one other one is, is the, and I didn't know where that was, I couldn't find it. We had talked about it when we had the five, that the president was a tiebreaker, not always a voter. That had happened when I first got on the board here.
But it wasn't written anywhere in the manual, so can we even do that?
That's what we did for a long time, it was a tiebreaker.
I'm thinking it was an understood thing, but not really a legal thing.
I couldn't find it in the book.
The president was the tiebreaker?
So there's only four people voting, and then if it came out as a tie, the president.
Right, but it always ended up, you know, three to two, I mean, that wasn't an issue, but it was the tiebreak at the. I mean, it wasn't an issue, but it was the tiebreak at the time.
I don't like that because it takes away the vote of the president.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, and it only allows them to vote during a tie.
Well, it also puts the president in charge, basically, of every vote that could become a two-two vote.
Yeah.
It's not anywhere in this manual.
Yeah, I couldn't find it either. I just know that was an understanding.
I do know that, and I've said before many boards, which, when you audibly vote, there's many times one doesn't. It's accidental, it's never intentional. I see it even at the commissioner's office, often being the president because they're busy doing the motions and carrying out the discussions and things like that. My opinion is everyone should always audibly place a vote, the president included. I don't know that we would want to be a vote of four and have a tiebreaker.
No, no.
That could become a big problem, I think. Not just for us boards in the future, we have to think this manual is for future use.
Well, that's it, this manual, that's right.
They'll change it according to their needs, but they have to start with something.
Right, right.
So.
I think we always have everyone speaking no in us because she always puts it in minutes. It's always got five people accounted for.
Well, even, wasn't it-
Right, but we need to make sure everybody audibly makes-
Well, if you don't verbally vote yay or nay, isn't it considered a yay?
I think if you don't vote nay, it is considered a yay, even if you didn't say yay because you got distracted.
Or you didn't say, I'm not voting, you know.
Yeah, you would abstain if you had an issue, I think.
Right, so I think that-
But it's very important, I think, just so the public sees everyone did cast their vote.
Okay.
I've seen them catch themselves over there, wait a minute, I only heard four. Secretary is only recording four, we need five here, doesn't matter how they fall.
Mm-hmm.
One is real famous for sort of getting distracted and not audibly making his vote.
So I think that we've, we've gone over, Darren went over all of this. The only thing that I noticed on this was, we had talked about this, I guess at last month's meeting, was the, we had never done this until last year, but it says, "An annual board evaluation and retreat."
Right.
Which means that we do have to hold that retreat.
Unless we change this.
Unless we change this.
The one that's on the calendar, six slated already?
Well-
Did we put one on there?
We had one on and then we have so much going on at that time.
Right.
That's budget time.
Right.
We said that we would adjust that.
Right, right.
There's nothing set in stone that has to be in the spring, the summer, the fall, the winter.
No, and it doesn't say it in here either.
Right. And it says, "As a separate meeting each year at a time and place to be determined." So it could be June this year and it could be January next year. It's not set in stone.
Right, right.
I think it's an important point.
So there's nothing on-
I would support this to stay in this book.
Oh, so there's nothing on January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen?
There was, but I think we've decided that that's-
Okay, so I can see that off my work calendar.
Yeah.
But I think that was because, don't we have something else for January twenty-second? Or do we not?
Is that a budget?
That's a budget hearing.
I think we've instituted a budget meeting instead.
Table the review.
Right, right, right. Because it is a budget.
Yep.
Are we haven't yet?
We have budget meetings almost every week that month.
I have my work calendar, so I block the days off and the hours off that I need, so I don't see clients during that time.
Right, right. So don't take that away time-wise, but it may not be, I don't think it will be the retreat.
The agenda might be different.
It's going to be a budget issue.
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be a budget hearing is what it's going to be.
Budget meeting, yeah, yeah.
Didn't we vote on that? What, did we vote to change that last meeting?
We talked about it, I don't know if it was, it was agreed to not to have the retreat.
Yeah, we didn't take a vote on it.
I don't think it was a formal vote. It's conflicting with the time we have to attend to the budget and we're getting really packed tight for that.
Because doesn't, it runs right into the, because the meeting's not until what, the seventh nail?
Because we didn't do the first Wednesday.
And it's two weeks later, it's the twenty-second. That's what it was.
We needed that time for a budget meeting.
We needed that for a budget meeting.
We didn't just cancel that time, but we're not retreating.
So the twenty-second is for, yes.
So is there a time block now? I had the whole day block because I figured retreat needs like-
It's eleven to two.
Eleven to two is a pretty normal work session then. Okay.
Yeah, if we, if we have a work session, it's usually eleven to two. That's, you know.
And doesn't always go to two, but most times does.
Yeah, yeah.
If we finish early, great. If we don't, we're fine.
Right, right. But usually during bu- budget, um, meeting sessions, rather, they're during the day or the evening, they, they run late, so, not late, but it will run right up until the two o'clock time.
Would you like to-
For future.
Would you like to have a break from board council that day and him not show?
For the budget?
No, on eleven twenty-two.
Do you need to get some?
No, I'm checking with you, I'm just saying, it's, it's your, it's your retreat, it's, it's-
It's not going to, we're not, we're not going to do the retreat, we're actually going to, we gotta do the budget.
I don't know that we need council for budget meetings.
You're not going to set this to a new date?
That-
We probably don't need him for the budget.
No, not for budget.
No, I assume that.
You can have a day off.
You can have a day off.
But you'll get all of those meetings off, Darren.
We'll give you a day off.
All right, well, let me know if, if you end up setting a new date on the retreat, just let me know.
Okay.
So I guess that we need to at some point address doing that retreat. If it's, if we're going to continue to keep it in the handbook, then we have to do it at some point in two thousand and eighteen, so.
Yeah.
We need to, to keep that on the, keep it on there. I just happened to see that last night, like I said, this is my, I'm going into my fourth year as a board member. Last year is the first year that we've ever done that retreat thing. And so when I was looking at this last night, I'm like, wow, something that we were supposed to be doing.
Supposed to be doing, there's several things in here that, that is that case.
Yeah, yeah.
My thinking, the reason it's important, not only because of the camaraderie, of course, but we do task certain things to certain people and the next year would be the time to evaluate, did they get tasked? Do we have those committees built that we found we needed? And are we on a good plan to, to get this? Which I think we are. Dr. Kane has developed, and so has Greg, several committees since our last retreat.
Exactly.
Which was a tasked item that we were kind of responsible for doing.
Just one note to that, I do have the, I believe it was the twelve standards that we did the self-evaluation on. Dr. Kane has those, so.
Oh, okay.
That might be a good place to pick up when you have the retreat on yourself.
Okay, that's great. Because, because wasn't one of those committees a, a community budget committee or finance committee?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't know where we stand with that. Policy was one.
On policy, one was on finance.
Do we want to, do we want to use the same person that we used the last time? Do you want to check with her and-
You can certainly have that. I'll, I'll-
Why don't you check in with her and see what kind of her schedule?
I'll ask Dr. Kane and then maybe that's something you and Dr. Kane can speak about on behalf of the board.
Dr. Kane might have somebody in mind.
Well, that's true too.
But I was perfectly happy with Pearlman. I think that's, was her name? Okay, so I think we have to discuss or motion or decide this either stays or goes, this item, the retreat item.
Well, if we're not amending it, we don't need to vote.
Yeah, if we're not going to take it out, we don't have to do anything.
Yeah, because it would just, I think it's, it needs to stay in there.
I agree.
My own opinion.
I'm fine with it.
So, yeah. Carrie, if we get moving too fast, please stop us because you're new to this.
Oh, no, I like to sit back and watch and observe.
So, but if you have any questions, and listen, if we get a little farther ahead and you even have something back here that you're going to ask, please, you know, please stop us and ask, you know?
Thank you.
That's how we roll, right, guys?
That's right.
That's good.
So then we're at the master plan accountability, yeah, ability and continuous improvement.
I'm actually fine with that. I don't know about everybody else.
No, I was fine with that. I didn't see anything that needed to be.
No, I'm good with that.
And we have a master plan.
We do, and if you remember, Innovation Center Team One, which is looking at a revised strategic plan.
Exactly.
That they will, they will bring the executive team for feedback and then eventually to the board for feedback.
Okay, so we'll move on from there. Then we'll go on to membership on the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County.
Excuse me.
Obviously, any of those, as, like I was talking about before, anything that's a recitation of statute.
Right.
It'll be my job to just bring a current. You, for whatever reason, folks chose to have these in here and unless you want to remove them from your handbook, I think the only obligation is to make sure they're the current copy.
I was fine with it.
Mm-hmm.
If we get moving too fast, if anybody just speak up. Annual compensation benefits, same.
I don't want to touch change in that.
I don't think we can change that.
I think the commissioner said that actually.
County commissioners have to change that or something.
I do believe so.
You should be on page twenty now.
Yes.
Okay, so now we will continue to move on to mission, vision, values and goals.
I have no changes for page twenty.
And you said, Greg, when I asked about that, as we get through your, your process with your Innovation Center, we, we may want to go back to changing these later.
I, I would agree. I, I can already see, there's already changes to these goals as they're currently.
Mm-hmm.
They're no longer five, they're four. So we can do one of two things. We can, I can get you that information and update that, but it will also have to be updated again.
Again.
Once the new strategic plan and the goals.
Oh, okay, okay.
Also, just a side note to this, to, to be mindful, is that with the new Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESA plan, this is also going to have to change because the accountability measures are getting ready to change.
Okay.
So we'll give you an update on the board once we learn more.
Right.
You'll see that in the weekly update in my section. The state board has just got information on that. They got some feedback from the, the federal government, so they're working through some of the nuances of that. I only say that because this will change in, in the next six months.
But we're not quite ready there.
Future amendments will be needed, that's all I'm going to note on it.
Well, the other thing with this is, the development of this, as I understand it, came from, and you probably knew about this one, Sharon, they had a big, huge program involving the community. And they had, we had big meetings of all and a lot of input from community members, you know, parents. And, I mean, it was a huge ordeal getting this done where they established these items. And I wonder, it's been a long time since they had that, it was way before my time, that it might be useful, if we're going to make a massive change, to, to, to do something more like that again.
I don't agree. Community input on our mission as a board based on-
Oh, yeah.
State guidelines and ESA plans?
I'll bring it in and show you. We made a nice pamphlet about it.
Well, that's because we went from an elected, uh, an appointed board to an elected board. That was the reasoning behind it, had to be built somehow. I'm not sure I buy into it always needing to be continued community input for our vision as a, as an organization.
The one thing I would like to, to bring up on behalf of the superintendent is I know that she is setting up her superintendent advisory councils, ones of parents, ones of students. That might be a venue to share and get community feedback as we do the revision process.
Because she's going to probably go over our notes and what we do here and-
Absolutely.
She'll have input too.
Right, exactly.
We're not set in stone quite yet.
No.
I think basically our goal is to fix the blatant things that need to be changed.
Exactly.
I don't mean no community input, Bev. I, I'm remembering that whole community deal and how they came about the participants, which I did not agree with. But that was all because we were going to an elected board. The manual had to change, the handbook had to change.
But I'm thinking if we are going to then change that again, that we, we do need their input. We represent them, we, we need their concerns. They hate when we leave them out of, of major things like where we're going.
But I, I don't agree with the community. Not for mission statements and visions, I'm sorry, that's an organizational thing.
But it, no, I think it's the, the core of who we are and they need, of what we're doing for them.
But that's based on things like ESA and Innovation Center issues and things that we have developed that now need to come into our vision plan.
And, and on behalf of the superintendent, I, I think it is a, is a balance of new federal accountability measures as well as seeking input from the community. And that's why-
That's what I'm talking about.
-her forums that she's started, so that she can listen to the community.
Yeah, right, right.
And be able to seek input where I can see if the mission and vision change, those are outlets among others that this information would be shared. I think there's a balance of both.
Oh, great, yeah.
That, that has to happen.
I'm not saying only the community tells us what to do, but they need to feel like they're part of it because they are, they should be.
Sure, I'll certainly make a note for, to review this with superintendent and get her feelings.
Because if she's developed her groups.
That's fine, that's fine, just so we're getting it.
Is that sufficient as community input? Or are we talking about going out and having forty-nine hundred, forty-nine thousand input points?
In one way, though, I agree that, I mean, community and our students, our parents are the most invested individuals in our county.
Sure, sure.
So, that should definitely reflect that. And however she gains that.
Right.
It should come from or go hand in hand with both. I mean, if I wasn't on this board and just a parent, I might say, well, that mission statement doesn't reflect what I want, or vice versa.
Right.
So, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Maybe that's something, too, that would go out as a read. Is that something that as we develop?
It's not a policy.
No, it's not. I don't know. I don't know how wide open we want that to be.
I mean, most mission statements are pretty, you know, they kind of cover the bases. So, you're never going to come up with a mission statement that is going to probably hold a negative connotation to it, so.
So, there, because this is really all about strategic planning, Innovation Center Team One will be bringing you a policy that clearly outlines our strategic planning process for your review.
And that's probably where we base that.
For, if you want, you know, if there's additional things that you would like to see added in that. Yes, Ms. Carr?
Well, that in input, how we're measuring if we're reflecting what's here, the input that you're saying that you'll give to us, how do we measure if we're meeting these goals, or how are we measuring if we're in line with this mission statement? Is that?
Sure. And one of the things, and that where this is currently out of alignment in Goal One, we had changed that from high student achievement to student performance. And we've, we used to have sixty, about fifty-nine indicators that looked at different ways in which we gauged or measured academic performance. We've recalibrated those and eliminated those down to about twenty indicators. Some of that based on the college and career readiness standards, the PRC assessments, if you will. Those are going to have to be revised again, once we better understand the new federal laws, mandates of accountability. So, that's one of the things we're looking at right now, which is not only academic performance, how we look at safe schools. If you remember, I think the last board meeting, we looked at attendance. All of those are factors that we look at to gauge whether or not we're moving in the right direction. So, I know the superintendent wants to take a good, hard look at all of that and realign that, and which she'll come back to you for.
Is it suggestion on these alters? Okay.
Yes.
And when will we hear about that?
So, in the fall, I'm in the fall, in the spring, we will provide an update to the board on the ESSA accountability measures so that you will have a little bit of an understanding. We're right now just gaining awareness as a school system. The Maryland State Department of Education has put the state plan to the federal government. They've gotten feedback. The last state meeting I was in on Friday was trying to figure out, how is this going to work? What does this actually mean to local school systems? So, once that gets a little bit more clear, then we'll come back to the board and make sure, once we've got the information right, that you have the information. That information is going to certainly feed into our long-term strategic planning and our strategic goals, and then get into the measures in which we're going to be able to do that.
Okay.
The last thing I'll add is, at the last board meeting, then the superintendent talked about her goals. And those goals will have to align to these and our goals. So, it's all a nice big Rubik's Cube that we're trying to put together.
It's a huge job.
Thank you, Greg. I don't want to slow down the meeting with these kind of questions.
No, absolutely not.
Carrie, that's a good question because up to this point, I don't recall us, you know, actually being briefed on how we're meeting these goals in all the years I've been on the board. So, that's a great point.
It is a great question, yeah.
And so, I know that's just the last piece of that. That's one of the things that we've tried to do in the last six months, is provide the board with an update on each one of our current goals. And so, the last board meeting, we have gone through this fall, Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three and Goal Four.
Which are different from these five.
Because these haven't been revised for some time.
Right.
And so, those two things just have to come into alignment to one another.
Like what your measuring tools are and your basis.
So, there's several parts to this section.
Very much.
When you align that to the superintendent's goals, that will then give us a venue to evaluate her performance, too. And so, it all, that's a good idea that falls together.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things that we're working, that she's working on with us, is ensuring that there are metrics from within those goals so that at the end of the year, she can present to you, here's what my goals are, and here's what the metrics we've used, where have we made progress, so that it's clear to you based upon how you're measuring.
Good question, Carrie. Thank you.
Was there any other questions in this section here? Because
I don't have any more.
Merely states, board candidates, members elect, we didn't know we were going to do this vacancy and all this thing this year, Ms. Carrie, so. But here it is. The oath of swearing in, student representatives, how that's done. And then each student, as they sit on the board, what they have to do also. Any questions in that section of it? I'm fine. Everybody's questions answered that? Well, it's 12:03, so we're going to take a break at this time. And we will be back at 12:45. And we'll be back at 12:45. Welcome back. We will continue reviewing the board handbook. We left, where we left at Code of Ethics. Did anybody have any questions about this? I'm good?
I'm good.
Were you going to do something about student board member you talked about when we were ending?
That is a little Where was that?
Actually, it was on page twenty-two.
Do you want to go back there?
Well, I said, were you going to change something? And I know, overheard you listened to.
Well, actually, it's not changed. It's something that's already, they're supposed to, go ahead, Greg, you.
Yeah, it was just a, I think a recommendation, as I was learning about the process of when the new student board members are elected. It might be a good idea, and it's, it really has nothing to do with, it's more procedural. And that is just maybe recognizing that the last student, our board meeting where there's a student member in this, our last meeting, that we, we always recognize them, but it would be good to maybe introduce
The new one.
The new members, even though they're not going to start until July. And I think one of the things, and I'll brief the superintendent on that, typically, the May meeting is the last meeting because they're seniors. But according to this, they really need to be through June.
They can be a junior, too.
We'll make sure that we communicate that to them so they understand. They'll start the first July meeting. They will need to be there in the summer, certainly part of the expectation.
I mean, we need to think about that, because if you're going to introduce a new, well, I don't care about that one as much, but, you know, in June, they're doing their senior week, and we're going to interfere with all that.
No, he said May, and then
He said June.
They're supposed to, they're supposed to be here from July 1st until June 30th.
Oh.
The same that we follow, so that they should be coming through.
I'm not sure we want to do that to them.
I'm not sure either.
I don't think that's fair.
That might dissuade a good candidate from not doing it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Darren, the discussion we're having is the term of the student board member and when they should start and when they should conclude their term. I know you work for a lot of other jurisdictions, anything that prohibits. And I think some of the concern is just if you're a senior, then there's, you've got graduation that's coming up, you've got all those items. But this clearly does state from July.
It says it right here.
But that's, I think that's the law. I mean, remember, remember, you have a board, a year, that is a July 1st to June 30th year. You have board cycles that generally work that way. You have
The academic year.
Yeah, and without having the statute straight in front of me, let's, if in fact, it says the student, if the statute says a student serves July to June, then you're not going to be able to change that through your handbook. The one thing you can do, though, of course, is you don't have to, you don't have to say that somehow a student who fails to be at the June one because they have conflicts relating to their senior year activities, you know, so they've done something wrong. I think what you do is let them know as early as possible what that June date is.
Yes.
Have them communicate with you if it is going to run into a conflict with graduation or other related ceremonies. And then the idea, too, of prior to July, having the new selectees, because they're not yet board members till July, having them come to, in some way, some, some meeting before the July meeting where they're really going to start, and have them see any ceremony you might do or any acknowledgement of the students. I mean, you could do that in May if your May meeting was right.
I think so, too.
I just don't know enough of the calendar.
The old one, get their recognition. Nothing says they have to attend every meeting. So, if we don't do any change here, and they miss the June meeting, because it's understood they've got so much going on, I don't think we're in arrears of that one year of service.
No, no, that's not the issue.
We can't all attend every meeting either.
And the juniors may have scheduled items in May.
Yeah.
And I think the key is communication, that A, the newest student board members know what the calendar is as fast as possible, all the way into June.
Yeah.
And that they know the plan would be for your, the newest members of the following year, that they be brought to see how things go, to see
And even to be introduced, and then introduced again when they start their term.
Exactly. And I don't have, I mean, May, but when would they normally know the newest student members? May?
It would probably be by May, because they're getting ready to graduate, you know.
No, they're elected in March.
The newest ones.
Oh, okay.
We're going to, we're going to ensure that that
I think it's March or April.
It's because, okay, so if they know by March or April there, that gives you the leeway of a couple of months to have that transfer, even though, again, they can't take their position until July.
Right, exactly.
I have to make sure we weren't going to say
So, I'm kind of fine leaving it the way it is and we play by ear.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the law. The law is the law. I mean, it states that, so.
And again, we may run into the same thing we ran into with Grace. She was gone for a whole month. That didn't preclude her, thankfully, for applying and winning and us getting her.
Absolutely not.
But she did a very worthy trip, and so be it. Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, so, Code of Ethics, I don't think that there was any question with that one.
The ethics panel.
Was there something?
We don't do that.
Something with the ethics panel. It says we're limited to serve two consecutive terms. When do we do an ethics panel? We've never done it.
We have one, but we shouldn't, we are so late in getting a new one in.
We've never had a new one, as far as I remember.
We have the same people all the time, and, yeah, we need to work on that. I have that noted.
Well, where does it say that's our duty? To do, to develop the ethics panel? We should have an ethics panel. I don't see anywhere where it says the Board of Ed chooses those people.
Then why is it in our handbook? I mean, why does it need to be in our handbook, then?
There's nobody picking them.
We're required to have an ethics panel. It doesn't say we're required to develop it ourselves.
Right, but it says devise, receive and maintain all forms generated by the ethics policy and all that stuff. But, I mean, if it's not controlled by us, why is it even in our handbook, then?
It is.
That's why I was like, who are these people? Where, is this a county function? Is this a Board of Ed function?
Who does, who does?
It's
We have a list.
In almost every county.
They're on our website. We have a list.
Board of Education function.
It is a board of education.
Usually, there's Board of Education policy that folks have to comply with. For the most part, it's the disclosure of gifts and potential conflicts. And the main function of the ethics panel, unless asked from time to time, is to look at those forms.
I think, isn't it, isn't it how it's like most boards and panels, they submit something to, like, you put an ad out, say, we need members for this panel.
Yes, that sounds
They submit like a application for it, we review it, you pick your people.
And you all, and you all choose it. I mean, most, most boards populate their ethics.
We have not done that.
Do we even know who sits on the ethics?
I do. It's on the website. Their names are all listed.
We should know.
We do know they live in Queen Anne's County.
It is not unheard of, is not unheard
That we do know.
It's not unheard of for boards over time to find out, either because they happen to look at dates or because one of the panel members says, I'm finished, you know, to find out that
Natalie Vini's one. I think Natalie Vini's one of them.
It's not unusual to find out. You run past the three years.
Suzanne Henley is the attorney.
Suzanne Henley was the one who had them.
She was the advisor, legal advisor or something.
Yes, yes.
But they exist.
Natty, yeah, they're all there on the website.
I just saw it, but I don't even know who do have one.
Here's what you have to do. You have to find out how long each is served.
Okay.
Find out who's come to the end of what is, at least for now, your policy, which is the three years. It's probably also in policy somewhere. And for those folks who have overstayed the three years, I think you have to ask them, just have somebody communicate with them, are you interested in staying on? If not, we're looking for candidates.
I'd say they've all been at least six years.
Wow.
Well, I'm going to say, and maybe, am I reading wrong, like, each member serves for a term of three years. Should they have to reapply to be on it in order to get other new candidates? Or if they say, no, no, we want to stay on, and then we just forget about it?
No, no, I wouldn't allow that. I'd make them reapply.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Because it says they can only do two consecutive.
Right.
But they should apply for both of those terms.
I think so, yeah.
And then they can skip one and come back if they choose to.
Who should, who should do that?
I think Suzanne should do that. The attorney that
Well, I think ultimately you all
I think Dr. Kane's got to initiate that.
I think the superintendent, as the body secretary, can get the process going. I think you all are selecting your panel.
But Dr. Kane is actually, should contact Suzanne Henley?
Right.
Well, Suzanne Henley, I think what she's there for is so that you have, was there for, I mean, she was also given advice to the board. She was there to provide advice to the ethics panel on issues such as, so-and-so gave us a form that said they received a $500 gift from someone who's a current vendor. What do we do with it?
She was kind of like the liaison, too. If you had an ethics complaint, it went to her, and then she submitted it to the panel.
And she did all the paperwork and charged a lot of money.
Yeah, I don't think you all are, I'm not sure why that, I'm not sure any of that's necessary.
Can you check into that for us, please?
Yes, I will. I think we'll, how about, and how about I maybe brief you all on maybe similar practice, similar
What we used to do and what we probably want to do.
Yes.
But can I, in the meantime, can somebody reach out to your current members, you know, through the superintendent's office and simply get a handle on the roster, current addresses, last time they met, and when they began serving? I just think we want to have
I do, I do know you have to do that by phone call, because several of them do not use computers.
Well, I heard that they didn't even have computer access.
Greg, he's going to take care of that, so. He's going to reach out and take care of that, so.
It would have to be done through the phone or mail.
It's not like they're sitting in an office here, and we can just go grab them.
But again, it's not unusual to sort of have to reinvigorate, if that's the right word, or reboot ethics, the ethics panel. Because sometimes there aren't enough things happening. But remember, they do have that, they have that job every year to take a look at the disclosure forms. You know, for that alone, someone needs to
Our financial disclosures.
All, all, sort of an upper level staff, lack of a better description.
Wouldn't be surprised if no one has done that for many years.
And that's why I'm saying, this is a need to reboot, and it should start first and foremost with, are you folks out there? What was it, three?
I think it's three of them, yeah.
Three, yes.
Out there? Are you still interested? When did you begin? Because again, as long as they're at the end of the second term or the first term, it's fairly clean. If someone's in their seventh year or eighth year, under your own handbook, it's sort of past their time.
Right.
Especially if they didn't do a reapplication, and they just carried on.
Or they didn't, or they just simply haven't done anything, and their position hasn't been filled.
Right.
All right.
You do have a policy
Greg's going to reach out to them, and we'll hear.
Unnumbered, as you know, right now, but there is a Code of Ethics policy that cross-references the panel. It consists of three members appointed by the board for, are you ready for this, a three-year term. It doesn't necessarily say whether they can re-up, but
Two consecutive.
Right, I'm reading your policy. No, I'm reading your policy.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
I'm reading what's on your website.
Oh, gotcha.
What are you?
Why are we surprised?
But see your bullets that say devise, receive and maintain, that's all repeated in the policy.
Okay.
There's five bullets there. And then it goes into the whole thing of, you know, what are conflicts of interest? You know, why do they have to be disclosed? It's, just so you know.
Well, the biggest point of difference is two-year consecutive in here and not on the
No, it's just not referenced as twos. But just so you know, there are fourteen pages, two-year ethics policy.
Wow.
Really?
Probably based on other, on what's done in most places. So, so even if they're not that active, they certainly are charged with a fairly significant responsibility. And from time to time, there can be, I mean, there can be a complaint against a board member that can be played against a staff member.
It's all voluntary. There's no paid to that.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're, we'll all catch up on that, though.
Yep, in progress.
So, then we're at the appointment of the county superintendents of schools.
Bless you. It was very silent.
It was very silent. Responsibilities and duties of the superintendent of schools is page 27.
That, unless that's by law, written out there by law, that's, that might have to be changed based on like
All right, well
Put down as her goals and her
I was under a complete misunderstanding about some of this. I was not aware that ever were we kind of consulted or anything run by us about administrative and supervisory hirings. But this says that in advance of a transfer of an administrative or supervisory personnel, the board would be informed. I did not know that. So, I've been very guilty of saying, gosh, we never had anything to do with that. I'm okay with her making her choice and announcing it in the HR report, and we approve it.
That's kind of the reason why we did the other.
It's kind of not like that, according to this. So, I think we need to discuss, do we want to be a part of that process, how in it we want to be? Do we want to have a yay or a nay on a certain person for a certain reason? I'm a little unclear as to how that all did get convoluted, because the book is pretty specific, but I never
What is it, in the comar?
Realized that we were a part of that.
Is there a comar description in that?
This is, the best way to describe this, Captain Kelly, is this is from a bunch of different places plus overlay of the board's own preferences. This is not, you would never find all this in one spot.
Well, how about responsibility of, personnel responsibility, administrative?
There's at least, I can think of at least two spots in the education article where the superintendent's duties in that regard are spelled out. But none of this is, some of this is verbatim, some of it's not.
Yeah, I think before we decide, we really need to see if that's in comar.
Oh.
That, that's their
Can we not look that up right now?
Responsibility. The last item we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just going to say that I have said many, many, many times to many, many, many people, we are only responsible for hiring and firing a superintendent, not staff. Well, I'm wrong, really, basically, according to this.
No, I think no.
The whole point of the review of professional hires is ultimately you end up in your public sessions approving them. There's a difference between, though, notifying you in advance, if that's what you're asking in here.
The same form.
You know what? It's somewhere else in this manual. It's somewhere else in here, too. I believe it's somewhere else. I need to look.
Is it bullet number three? Is that what you're looking at?
I'm actually looking at that last
But look at number three.
It's all the same. It's the last one.
Yes, informs the board in advance of administrative reorganizations, including transfers, functions, establishment of positions, offices.
And consolidation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We've never done that.
Yes, we have.
Right, but I mean, informing is different than approving.
That's the HR report.
When all of those principles got moved at the end of the year, were you consulted on that? Were you informed of that?
We were informed.
Well, that's a term of art. Informed is not consultant, informed is not seeking approval. Informed simply means you'll be notified in advance.
In advance.
That's it. I'm just saying.
We got a letter, though, an email that's saying who was moving where.
Yep.
And did we this year?
An advance of them moving, of them actually moving.
Did we this year, too, on our moves?
I can't remember every time, but I do remember that one, because that was such an upheaval of things going on.
All right, well.
I think we were notified this year. Pretty sure, my buddy.
I mean, would a closed session be considered informing us?
Yeah, that's
The HR report.
That's not in advance. That's not in advance.
Well, yes, it is.
They hadn't moved yet.
Because you get your HR report on Friday, before the meeting.
And in point of order, for those positions that require board approval under statute, that happens in the meeting. It doesn't have to happen. You vote on it.
We don't have to approve the HR report. But you get your HR report on Friday, so you are, you are given advance notice of any changes. Now
I would hate to see it come down to that.
And then you can bring it up when we come to the meeting, and if you choose not to approve the HR report, then that's, that's where it's at. But we have asked that in advance of
And they have been doing it.
Major chances, changes, and they have been doing that.
We have been following that.
Does it seem to you, though, then if we do, we disagree with the assignment of somebody as a principal, other than saying, we don't approve the HR report?
See, here it is.
If we have a majority?
It's still, it's still the majority is
I don't think she can, I think
Stop them from getting the job.
Yeah, I think she can. I think it would be a, like, a hold on it, but here's the thing, you would have to come up with
A really, very
Very solid
Reason.
Legal, where it couldn't be, you know, you got to got to know something big that would stop that move, because we don't have the power to do that, except for if we know knowledge of something that maybe the superintendent or somebody didn't know. But it would have to be pretty, pretty solid.
And then like, we just don't, we just don't approve the HR report.
Recommend the appointment of administrative and supervisory personnel to the Board of Education for its approval.
Where are you at?
Where's that?
Next to the last one.
Oh, next to the last one.
Whether by discreet personnel action or by way of a monthly report. Okay, so we do get our monthly report.
They are HR report.
Yes.
So that is every principal and every...
But usually, when we get our HR report, they have already been offered their position.
I mean, are we...
So it would be very difficult to...
I've brought, I've made that, I, I've been making that comment for years, as in, if you've already hired them, why are we approving it?
I, I didn't think we had anything in this.
Okay, it's in here. My question is, is this legal for us to do that? Are we allowed?
Here's the statute that's operative with respect to the appointment of, and I'm, and I'm sticking with, for the purpose of discussion, what I believe everybody's focused on here, which is the professional personnel, i.e. the certificated personnel, either in teacher roles or administrative roles.
Not teacher.
Not teacher, administrative or supervisory.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Upper echelon or executive team.
Assistant principal, principal, and central office roles. That's what I was thinking in my head.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For, it says right here in six dash two oh one, except as provided in another section, the county superintendent shall nominate for appointment by the county board all professional assistants of the office's superintendent, that's the assistant superintendents, the, you know, anybody in that sort of higher level, uh, position in the superintendent's office, all principals, teachers, and other certificated personnel.
Oh, I'll be darned.
As the...
We didn't have it all.
As to the personnel, again, this is the key in the statute, as to these personnel, the county superintendent shall assign them to their positions in the schools, transfer them as the needs of the schools require, recommend them for promotion. Again, there's a distinction. Assigning and transferring does not require any action by the board.
And I'm fine with that, actually.
Promoting, promoting people does, and hiring people does.
Wow.
The way it works in practice, and this is not all unusual, is at some point prior to a meeting in which that list of changes, and remember, it's broken down, right? You ever notice it's broken down into different categories? There's a reason for that. But the categories are treated differently. So, for instance, where it says so-and-so's being moved from this AP job to this AP job, for instance, that's not subject to board approval.
Right.
It's on the report, and you can vote to accept it or not. But there's other parts of the report that are subject to a board vote.
Right, and I've made this, this is where I have made an argument for, since I've been on here, is that superintendents hiring people, telling them they're hired, and then coming to us for approval. I have said, we're, we're putting the cart before the horse. We should say, this is who I'm recommending to be hired, seek your approval, then you offer the job.
And the communication should have a, they should have contingency language in there.
Because otherwise, what's the point of us approving the HR report if it's already been done?
And the way you get...
And you're right, and you have said that over and over.
Practically speaking, the way you get through the reality of, hey, we're missing someone in this area of critical need, is you hire people on an interim basis or on a contract basis to cover some serious need, subject to your final hire.
Ending HR approval by the board, I suppose.
And if you make an offer to somebody, it's contingent upon...
And like I said, normally, it would be approved, because unless we would have any inside information that the superintendent would not have been privy to.
Sure.
There's really, we would have to trust, that's why she's in that position.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
But to go back to your handbook, okay, because it's two, you don't want to mix the apples and oranges here. The question about your handbook is this responsibilities and duties of superintendent schools, as I answered, I think it was Captain Kelly's question. This thing is not a recitation of law, nor is it a recitation of everything outside the law. It's sort of a whole mix, and it clearly reflects what a board or boards in the past wanted in this handbook. So when you read in the third bullet, informs the board in advance of administrative organizations, including transfers of functions, establishment of positions, offices, consolidation of positions and offices, that means what it says. It says informs in advance. It doesn't say ask you permission or anything.
Ask for our opinion or ask for a solution.
But it says you should know in advance. But then you go to, where's that other one? Uh, Greg, is it then, towards the bottom, right? Towards the bottom?
Well, the very last one.
The next to the last one and the last one.
Well, okay, no, but there's second one that says recommends appointment of administrative and supervisory personnel to the Board of Education, okay, for its approval, whether by personnel actions or a monthly personnel report. Again, that's a recommendation, so of course, that's in advance, and it is subject to board approval. Why? Because it's appointment. That goes back to the language, which says, shall nominate for appointment those professional assistants and all principal teachers. But then what's the next bullet? Informs in advance of the transfers. That is also consistent. So it's not that this is inconsistent with stat, statute, it's that it's a mix. You just have to look closely at the words. Someone chose recommends because it, it works with the statute. Someone chose informs, because for that part, it works with the statute, and there is a difference.
I recommend we clarify in here what administrative and supervisory is. Just be real specific, because it's saying, you're saying the law says teachers, too.
Well, no, two different categories.
This is our...
But where we have teachers, I think we ought to clarify.
I don't, I don't think we should include teachers in this at all.
I don't either.
Just as it is.
By law, we have to.
No, we don't. No, we don't. He just clarified. That's the law. This is our guideline.
I know.
We're not breaking the law by not including the teachers.
Well, I don't, I'm confused.
Am, am I misunderstanding, Derek?
Here's the statute.
Yes, thank you.
It's a dissertation of the law.
The county superintendent shall nominate, i.e. recommend, for appointment by the county board the following, all professional assistants of the office of the county superintendent, so that's going to be the folks that occupy the central office. That's part one. And two, all principals, teachers, and other certificated personnel. So when you get a report prior to the school year, recommending hiring of teachers and principals, that's by law.
That's it. And she's covered. She's done what she was supposed to do.
And that is for your approval.
I mean, technically, the last line could just say, in advance of transfers of personnel. I mean, because that's pretty much covering everything, not just those two.
And then the one above that...
Well, that's, again, informs in advance of transfers. Remember, transfers is completely different.
That's all personnel.
Completely different than that, yes.
Transfers is completely different than hiring.
That's hiring, yes, yes.
Talking about the recommendations. I just think we should be specific.
And, and this gets to your point about transfers, which also involves reorganizations.
Yes.
Superintendent has the authority, and I believe, if I recall back in my contract, it clearly states up in the superintendent's contract that they have the authority to reorganize.
That's exactly why both of them say inform here. But if what you're doing, let's just say you're going to move three principals around to three different schools, and in the process, there's also an AP who's resigned or retired. In the process of reorganizing, you also have to hire somebody. That hire is a different thing than a reorganization or a transfer.
Yes, yes.
It's not merely an inform, it's actually got to be, you are requesting approval.
Okay.
And, and it may, I think the reports are broken out this way.
They are.
I really do think that they, they meet the statute. The question is, how much do you really want in your handbook that's not already in statute? And if you want it in your handbook, do you want it in all this detail, or you want something different? I mean, that's kind of where you are. There's nothing...
But yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with it, how it is, but I was just, that was my only...
I think where we say recommends the appointment of administrative and, next to the last bullet...
Yep.
That when we say administrative and supervisory, administrative is principals, supervisory is, is Greg and Sid, and that's it.
Executive team.
Executive team.
But it isn't.
Curriculum supervisor.
Yeah, it was all.
Right, right.
Okay, so I think we, it's a little confused, we don't have teacher in there, we have to put teacher in there somewhere.
That's hiring. That's hiring.
Recommend the appointment of...
We don't recommend the appointment of teachers.
Uh-uh.
For our approval.
Now, this is the superintendent's, this is about the superintendent.
The superintendent is recommending to us for approval, the appointment of teachers, the hiring of teachers, says in the statute. That's what I mean, we're confused here.
No.
I just don't think it's covered here. That's all.
It's not, it's not broken out.
No, it's not. I'm saying the recommendation, the, the...
Sometimes if we get it too clear, it's catching us in too many caveats.
Appointment of personnel, just take out administrative and supervi, supervisory.
Would you like, since one of the things that we're going to do from this, and I want to clarify it, too, just so you all know, because I actually unfortunately won't be able to state the duration of the meeting, I had mentioned to the president that what I thought we would do when this is done is, as you make whatever hand edits you make, is obviously, I've got to update the statutes, update the references to statutes. One thing I could do, if you'd like me to, is on this page, where there is language in the statute that could be substituted for what's here.
A good idea.
Or simply, at least the sake of discussion.
Yes.
Make that substitution. Include it here, and then you kind of roll with it from there, and you'll see it where it fits. A lot of these are definitely just a blend. But, but, but I would agree that right now, what's in here would, does not include verbatim what's in the statute.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, I think that's great.
That work on the next circulation draft?
That's fine.
All right.
Okay, so we're, okay, so additional responsibilities.
All right, the one thing that stood out to me is something that I don't remember us ever doing. The Board of, uh, under meetings with public bodies and legislative delegation, the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners generally meet annually on a joint-developed calendar day.
We have not done that.
And the Board of Education will host a meeting of the elected members of the Queen Anne's County delegation of the Maryland State Legislature. We have not done that either.
Well, I guess generally, the meeting between us and the county, you could...
Could include that, yes.
Could include when we go to the county meeting for the budget. I mean, right?
Uh, no, no. He's giving, or she's giving a budget presentation, we're just there for support. They sit at their table, they do what we're doing, we sit back there.
I've already asked, I've already asked her to ask the county commissioners to, to have a sit-down.
We can go, yes, absolutely, we can go.
We can sit at a roundtable, they can come here, or we can go over there.
And then we need all your state delegates to have some kind of annual fall meeting. It specifically says, in the fall of the year, the meeting will be held with the Maryland delegation, meaning people like Ernst, Ernst, and, and those four guys, Hershey.
Hershey, Grace, James.
And probably the commissioners, too, but maybe not, I don't know. We've neither done, we've done neither, that, since I've been here.
Can I ask, is this something that, that past boards just put in this handbook, or is this something that is a general practice across the state?
Probably something past boards put in here, I, I would guess. But there could be counties that do it. Maybe all the Eastern Shore counties do it, I don't know.
It is done by several of them on my legislative committee, some of the bigger counties, they do it all the time, they meet where they're dealt with it. And they, they discuss the upcoming legislative issues.
Yeah, that's why the timing, I think, is the way it is in here.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
There's no requirement.
We're working on the county commissioners, so we'd like to have a meeting with them before we actually sit down to do...
Before the budget presentation goes to them, you mean?
And if Dr. Kane, I'll reach out to the county commissioners as the president to see if we can invite them to a, to a open meeting sometime, maybe in January, just a roundtable, we can do it here, or we can do it over there. We might have to do that in the evening.
Sure.
Um, so, but, um, I'll be more than happy to reach out and see if...
Now, that wouldn't have to be open to the public, would it?
Of course.
Or would it be?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Then we have to start thinking about...
Well, we'll just advertise it, but the roundtable would just be the county commissioners, it would be, it would be like, there were sessions and non-speaking, they may come, but, you know.
There's two items here.
Yep, so, um...
Clearly.
Gotcha. I can reach out to both of them, if you'd like for me to. I could reach out to...
Well, the one says, held in the fall. I don't know if we want to stick to that.
Well, we're not going to be able to do that, because they're going to go back into session.
And that's why I was thinking maybe just even remove that in the fall. And that's why I was thinking maybe just even remove that in the fall, annually, leave that in, sometime during the year you would like to meet with your Maryland delegation group. It does not have to be in the fall.
No, I don't think so either.
So that would be a change that maybe I would recommend taking out a timeframe. We've got a whole 12 months, it's a collaboration, is what it is.
Just do annually.
Yes, yes.
And we can pick, but fall is, is recommended, before the session is recommended, so they can defend things that we think are important, and, and there are.
Upcoming, yeah, that's true, that's true, upcoming legislative issues.
A lot of the county, the big, the counties, a lot of them have their own legislative items they want them to put forward.
Right.
If we have something, we may want to do this before the fall.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, so maybe leave it as it is.
Yeah.
Just leave it as it is, but be cognizant that we've never done it and we probably should.
And that we need to get it done.
My question was just, how often does the Board of Education ask the state legislators to be looking at sponsoring a bill, or like, what is the, the involvement of the Board of Education with the, the General Assembly session, like, does that, is that a big deal? Every year where we're like, hey, we got an interest in this and that, and we want you to.
Generally, it would be the State Board of Education, though, Mabe, and the State Board of Education would do that.
Does it set out like their platform sort of for that session?
Yes. And then we go online with that. Beverly attends a lot of the legislative committee stuff.
Mabe's thing, but this, these are the items relevant to us here in Queen Anne's County, and this is what we want you to take a look at as our reps.
Last year, I think we did submit one for ourselves, I'm trying to remember.
They'll generally, Carrie, they will generally get that, and it's actually a pretty good, both pre and post legislative session write-up that they do, Mabe does a good job with it. No, I, you, you might think, why in the world, I wouldn't even think that bill would apply to schools, and yet, they're good at picking that out, but if they get you the word early, they'll, they'll either just ask for comment, ask you to support the position of either Pizzam or Mabe, or like Beth said, if there's a time when you want to chime in on something, you chime in and Mabe will, Mabe will carry that ball, and once in a while, they'll ask folks to attend, they'll, they'll raise their hands and say, hey, get on down here, they're trying to take out teacher appeals and let them be handled by AAA, we want you down here to testify. So, you know, depending, it's, Mabe carries the ball pretty well, but they'll call on this board, or you may identify something and ask them, please. Um, I know Pizzam will do it, great, if a super, an individual superintendent calls Renee Spence at Pizzam and says, we have concerns about this bill.
Absolutely.
She will work with that school system and see if others may feel the same way.
And in their, their monthly meetings, this is a constant, you know, they get a constant update on proposed legislation.
Right.
If Pizzam takes a stance as a superintendent organization on particular pieces of legislation. Superintendents also have a delegation day where they go and meet with a delegation of the Eastern Shore, or in Annapolis, I think Superintendent was just there last month.
Because there's prefiled, I mean, we know some of the bills, I mean, they're prefiled at least.
In February, which, that everyone never attends, but it's a good thing to go to, in February is a luncheon that is held at, in Annapolis, and most of the counties, all of their boards, their entire board attends, and that is when the legislators come to the lunch too, and you have a chance to interact with them, they sit at the same table with you, and that gives you another opportunity to, to really push right, right when the, the session is beginning.
It's probably why it's set up that way, I would.
It is, yeah.
And you can keep us informed when that is?
Yeah, sure.
Great, perfect.
Well, it's already set, I'll have to get it off to you, so that's a good place to.
Who receives Mabe's, in, on, for this board, does anybody receive Mabe's, Mabe's various transmittals and missives and memos?
I think it depends on what it is.
Okay.
Which part of Mabe it comes out of, and where someone might be involved. I believe Beverly probably gets legislative items and things like that.
It's on their website, but I think the superintendent gets.
Yeah, because I, I think what you would do as a board is maybe say that, hey, when, because now we're getting into the season, when those things are issued, you as a board should ask to receive copies of them.
Well, I always try to send anything I get from Mabe forward to everybody, not knowing whether they got it or not.
Sure.
If I went to a budget meeting and they say, hey, the directors cleared the budget, we're go, I send that to all of them, so they know, if they got it in duplicate, I apologize. I do, just like the video, and I saw Sarah and I was like, oh man, we gotta do something on that.
I don't do that, I never, I mean.
I knew, I wasn't sure, but I thought, I'm gonna send this.
Yeah.
If they've already got it, that's great, but this is our student board member, and she was very well highlighted, I thought it was great. We do need to mention probably that Grace was out of the country, it wasn't that she just didn't attend.
You didn't get that notice, what she had, then?
With the video?
Yeah.
No.
Maybe, okay, well, we need to, I'll make sure we get you.
See, I think because we're on committees, that's what I think it is.
We will get it to your, they do have a website.
Oh, I sent it.
Yeah, no, I mean, we should get you on the, the.
Well, I think because I was on the, um.
We'll try to get you on the list, so you get it, every board member, but you can always, and it's really advantageous to look at the Mabe website periodically to see what's going on throughout the, throughout the state.
Anyway, I always forward to you guys, whatever I get, because I don't know if you've got it.
You all, as I mentioned to Annette, I have a, it's a calendar conflict that's kind of come up over the last couple days.
Well, I only see three or four more pages that I'm even interested in, there's nothing at the back.
I don't, I don't want to interrupt your flow, I wanted to let you know.
Bill and all that, I think is standard.
Well, I think the only thing that, if you got a few minutes here.
Yep.
Is the appeal.
Well, I was gonna tell you, I looked at pages 20, the filing pages, excuse me, 40.
Okay.
Say, I'm sorry, 56, 68, and there's one more, I just couldn't find it, uh-huh. 44, 56, and 68 are each pages that deal with hearings and the setting of hearings for 4205, 6202, and 7305 type hearings. The officers and I were talking at one point in time, and they made a good point that while you've done this calendar incorporation of when you'll do hearings, it's not reflected yet in here, and what I was gonna suggest to you is, I could insert exactly the same language on those three pages that deals with your setting aside hearing time.
I think that's fine.
That's great.
You'll still need to tell people in advance of the hearing, but, but I think if we do the same thing for all three types of hearing, when they're not going out to hearing examiner but being heard by you.
Right.
That'll cover it, so that'll be included in the next circulation draft.
So in future, future, we don't have to scatter to, everybody set up a date, this is the dates, this is the times, if there's attorneys or whoever, this is when we do it.
Right, just, and Carrie probably doesn't know, know that, right? We talked about, did we end up in practice, although the two hearings got canceled that were set.
Right.
In practice, it was, we're looking at the same day as your work session, so it'd be daytime, and I think it was generally.
Before.
Before.
Yes.
With the idea of being able to say to folks, we have a two-hour window to do your hearing, so.
9:00 AM.
The idea was, be able to tell appellants who say in June have submitted an appeal, the next available date is August, whatever it is, in the morning at 9 o'clock, and that allows you all to incorporate in your calendars, that on the same day you do 11 o'clock meetings, reserve that earlier time, because you were talking about reserving your work calendar, you'll be able to say, okay, pretty much my whole first two-thirds of my day will be occupied one way or the other, and you can always, and we talked about this, if you're in the middle of a hearing and you get to your 11 o'clock hour, what you feel like in fairness to the parties, whether it's the superintendent's side, or the employee's side, or the student's side, that we want to continue this hearing and do more, you can take a break from the hearing.
All right, but that brings us back to being required to have on our schedule every third Wednesday of the month, a work session, which we've been discussing not doing except during budget times or if we have a specific item.
But we don't have to do them if we don't have an appeal.
Exactly, but if we're gonna start that practice, keep in mind, we must give cancellation notice in the previous business meeting, so that means we have to know by the first Wednesday, open meeting, 6 o'clock, that we're not gonna carry out our Wednesday, third Wednesday meeting.
So that it comes off of the count.
It gets notified, notified there.
So we notified that night at the end of the evening?
That's how, so we either keep it just like this and nothing changes, and we just make sure when we cancel, they've been told the Wednesday of the first monthly meet, of the first Wednesday of the monthly meeting.
That's fine.
That we're not having a Wednesday meeting.
We can do it at the end.
We didn't have any appeals, we didn't have any business to take care of, we're not having it.
When we come up with, when it comes to the end of the meeting, when we do future actions of the month or whatever.
And meetings, yep.
And if it says meeting on there and it's gonna be canceled, we can, I'll check with Darren.
Perfect.
If we have nothing, then we make it that we're not going to.
And that's our only obligation for the public, is to tell them we're not having it. It does get publicized through a PR, through a press.
Is that okay to do that?
And you're better off having this incorporated in your calendar.
Exactly.
For either or both possible events.
Right, right.
And then giving proper notice of cancellation, then scrambling to actually hold a session.
That's why you're giving 14 days' notice that we're canceling, if there's nothing on the, on the calendar for that day.
Yep.
I think, I could, like I said, incorporate that language in the next circulation draft, and you guys can see if it works.
And that gives us still the opportunity to develop the very kind of calendar that Carrie has in front of her for a year in advance.
Right.
These are what we project as possible work sessions, doesn't mean we're gonna have them, as long as we notify them the Wednesday before, we don't have to.
I think we should always have them, and if none of us can attend, Sharon will attend and just cancel it later.
In my yellow sweatshirt, but I didn't wear my baseball hat, I was like, okay, you better wash this here and get out of here.
Thank you for doing that, Sharon.
Um, so that actually covers that fine, dear, page 29 and 30.
Thank you for your understanding, you all.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
I, I do have something, um.
They are?
They are.
Well, thank you, who, who are they from?
From me.
Homemade breads and cookies, I like it. Thank you very much, they, we're hosting everybody, so they'll get good use.
There you go.
You all have a great holidays.
See you there.
I'll talk to you soon.
Have a holidays. So on page 30, I just have a question about.
Can we, I was gonna say, um, if anybody's got a question at this point, because I don't think we have a whole lot.
Just skip to them, I'm fine.
Let's move to where we need to be.
I really need, I had an appointment at 1:00.
Okay, now, I, I, citizen participation is not intended to be questioned.
Wait, 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 we're jumping ahead, 30, I'm on page 30.
Oh, yours is 30.
Yep, 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 yep.
Sorry.
The deadline for submitting items for inclusion in the agenda is 10 days prior. I think that's unreasonable, we might have an agenda item three days in advance, we ought to be able to do it, as long as Jackie is working the agenda as a working document, we could add something to the agenda, my understanding is right up until we meet, as long as we approve the agenda with the change.
I don't agree with that, because that's too much on Jackie, um, I think that if everybody.
We, I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying 10 days in advance is way too long.
Everybody sees the agenda on Friday, you have until Monday morning.
That's great.
At 9:00 AM.
Turn this to three days.
Turn this to three days.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yep.
I'm okay with that, are you okay with that, Jackie?
Okay.
But not the day before.
Not the day before.
Not the day before, and not the day off.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that. All right, now it's your turn, Annette.
Well, I was just gonna give you a hard time.
Well.
On page 31, citizen participation is not intended, you made a, at the last meeting.
I know, I'm, I'm gonna address that, I've got, I've got lots of notes on this page. I feel a board member should be able to ask a question if someone has misled or improperly stated an item. I'm not asking for a dialogue, I'm basically.
But you're gonna get one.
Clarifying that they have misstated.
But it clearly states, when you come before.
I know that, I know that.
It's not a question and answer session, if you got, if you want to, if you want to put it in writing and do it to the board member personally, or to the board S.
That's the public asking us a question.
Then that's the way it should be done, but we could be here.
Commissioners ask questions when someone's in there in front of them, doing a comment all the time.
I don't agree with it, but that's up to everybody else.
Um, I just had a question because no one clarified how they got into the program. I heard your comments, I, I saw you.
Yeah.
I heard you.
Yeah.
But really, if the public doesn't know how those names were generated and accepted into a program, and the person presenting that program just missed that, that fact, what is the harm of the board bringing that up?
But that was only, that was only for something like that, how about if it's something totally different from that?
I think we all have enough self-restraint to know.
Are you sure, Sharon?
No, us, us.
We're talking about you. Sharon, we're talking about you, you could turn a two-hour meeting into five.
You're worried about dragging it out?
No, I was just laughing, because I was just like, oh, I wasn't, because I heard your interactions yet, and I looked at your face when you said that, I thought, is this an angry thing, or is she gonna laugh?
No, no, on my, I said, board members should be able to pose a question, or somehow steer it back in the right path.
I know that the superintendent has done that in the past, but I.
Maybe it's heard, maybe we should.
But she may not have known what you knew because of the situation.
Not to dump on her, but maybe it should be within her realm, she is the meeting leader, basically.
Right, but I think your comments, she wouldn't have had inform, that known.
But I could have, I could have noted, I could have given her a note, or I could have said something to her, because I had the comment long before she finished her presentation.
Right, right.
Um, and just like when some of our administrative people come up and speak at our public comment session, they're not really giving us a presentation, but often they're discussing something that we do for the system and for the students, why couldn't the board member ask a question that maybe they even had in their notes, but because they're on a two-minute timeframe, they skipped over it, and we know they've skipped it, and it's really important to the public that they hear that little part, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying get into a discussion with the public, I definitely agree that.
I think if you open it a little bit.
Yep, it's gonna.
Certain people it would.
Well, that's the rest of what I'm getting ready to address, we need.
Why do we have to write it down anyhow? We already do that.
What do you mean?
Why do we have to say in there that, that a board member can, I mean, we already do that, where, where.
Well, I guess we, so it doesn't get long-winded, we can say, we can address you in writing at another time period.
That's when they have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't have a problem with, this is all about the people talking, it's not about the board.
Yeah, yeah.
So why can't the board just do what we've been doing, if you want?
Well, I think they're putting me on notice not to.
Not we, I didn't say.
No, 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 no.
I mean, it doesn't.
And I see where you're coming from, I certainly do, I just feel like.
You're gonna, you're gonna take this, and it's gonna become this.
Well, I agree, and sometimes by not writing it down, we still keep ourselves in, in a box, and I agree with that. Too much writing gives us too much.
I guess if you had something to say that was very short and just brief, and then it would be the duty of the board president, if it was going on, to say, I'm sorry, but this was not a question and answer, she was making a statement, it's over with, next question.
That's where I'm getting to, next.
And I think that maybe that could handle that problem?
Oh, thank you.
So why don't we?
So leave it as it is.
I'd say we leave it open, right, I'd say we leave it open, because periodically we do have a question, it doesn't, it's not gonna lead into a long discussion.
Right, and, and I would like to see us go back to enforcing that two-minute timeframe, that's gotten completely out of control, where's our clock, where's our buzzer, didn't we used to have a buzzer?
And I don't agree with people signing up multiple times to get longer periods of time.
And asking to speak for three organizations.
That is so wrong.
Well, so, asking to speak for three organizations and do two minutes for each, no.
Yeah, no.
No, I agree, it's two minutes.
Has to be enforced, and it's not, the last couple meetings, it has not been enforced.
It has not, it has not, and didn't we used to have a time clock that buzzed? Do we still have it?
Mr. Pender does keep the time.
And let's start using that again.
But I don't know if the beeper goes off.
Well, it used to.
And I think it.
When I sat in all your meetings the year I was.
So we need to make sure that beeper goes off.
Eighty-two ago, we had it, I think just last meeting.
So I'd like to see that adhere to again.
Yeah.
And figuring out who does stop a speaker when they go out of line.
Sid, Sid does usually do it, if it's, if he feels that they're kind of wrapping things up, he'll let it go, which is polite.
Yeah, exactly.
But I, I know there has been a couple times where we, I think he thought it was wrapping up.
And it did, yeah.
You know, I don't think that should be Sid's responsibility, that should be yours.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would agree with that.
The two minutes, oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
And, and when.
I'm going to let it only go so long.
Right, right, and our specific.
Keep her, but she's beside you.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and we have specific.
Trick on the chair.
We have specific verbiage that says.
We'll make Jen's time people from.
Employees' names are not to be mentioned, employment positions, negotiated contracts, any kind of employment things, somebody needs to stop anyone who goes there as soon as it starts, whose responsibility is that?
Again, I think it falls on the President.
Okay, are you okay with that?
They run the meeting.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. But where do we draw the line on that too, because there's a, there was a discussion going on at last board meeting that I was getting ready to slam the gavel down, but that person wasn't here under a, um, um, thinking that he may have been here on his own personal time.
But he still mentioned an employee's name.
But that wasn't until the end.
Or a community per, that's true, you're right.
So how, how do I say?
You're right.
But he was given a lot longer than two minutes.
Correct, correct, you're right, the.
I couldn't stop it because.